Subanswer.
Hey, am I on? Hi, guys. Okay, good. Okay. Uh, no.
Everyone ready?
Are we ready to go?
You're live.
Awesome. Thank you. Okay. Town of Groveland, welcome. Planning board meeting on Tuesday, August eighth, twenty twenty-five, seven P. M. in Town Hall. What is the wish of the board?
A motion to open.
Seconded.
Motion made and seconded to open meeting. Call those in favor.
Aye.
Roll call.
Roll call.
Oh, we need to do a roll call. Roll call vote.
Brad Legals, aye.
Chris Goodwin, aye.
D. J. McNulty, aye.
Patrick Molina, aye.
Jason, aye.
Wally, Sorenson, aye.
Thank you. So moved. Okay. All right. We will kick it off immediately with. What's that?
I don't have a vote. You get a full board, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Eight thirty-three Salem Street. Annie, Sam, and Rebecca have reviewed the amended plans.
I'm gonna recuse myself.
Okay.
Yep. I'm gonna hit the chair.
Brad Legals is recusing. All right. So on eight thirty-three Salem Street, Annie, Sam, and Rebecca have reviewed the amended plans of the proposed changes that constitute a major modi- constitute a major modification to the original approved plans. After their meeting, they have recognized that the impervious area is being reduced. Stormwater impacts may remain unchanged. The overall site layout is significantly different from the original approval. A less impactful change does not necessarily mean it isn't a major one. Part of the basis for the determination is that the stormwater calculations will require review by T. E. C. and the revised site circulation will also need to be evaluated by the fire department. The board has in front of you a smaller size of the original approved layout. So as you guys may know, that eight thirty-three Salem Street, there was an original plan, one temperature-controlled building. The ask is to revise that, and I think it's three smaller units, not temperature-controlled. Is that correct?
Yeah, drive-up style, standard.
Drive, standard like the other units, okay? Okay. So it's up to the board here on whether we feel as though the request is a minor modification to the plan or a major modification. Major modification needs to be sent out for review to T. E. C. for pair review. Minor would not require that. There's been some back and forth, and now it's on us to make that determination.
What's the standard as between whether the change is major or minor?
So Rebecca, do you wanna talk through what a typical?
So just for matter of precedent, we had gone through the same process with four forty-four Main Street, which was Eric Harper's building in the aquifer protection and wanting to add a building in the back. And the board, because even though the reduction of impervious surface due to what he was proposing, the board wanted to see that as a major modification and have him refile. So we use that as a threshold, but in regards to what we see, it's essentially what the chairman just read off is that where the stormwater calculations would be impacted on the site, we feel as though we have a due diligence to make sure that the surrounding property owners are not impacted by any changes and want to have a technical expert certify that that is in fact the case. In addition to the fact that what was approved and the decision that was sent out to the abutters, because that's part of the practice, is that they get to see the decision and they get to see the plan, is going to differ substantially in terms of the building layout and abutter notification. So we wanna make sure that we're going through the proper process and giving it the proper due diligence to ensure that, again, they are able to see the changes and know that it was heard properly by the planning board.
For them to also have a chance to be heard if they wanna be heard and those sorts of things.
Yeah, can I chime in on this, Gus?
Yes.
The difference between these two is that this is an active construction project with a live special permit. Eric Harper's property had been dormant for quite some time, quite a few years. And although what they had submitted at Harper's was part of an original plan, I'm gonna say close to a decade ago, it changed, so and there was a large lapse of time. This one, where it's a current and active construction project, this clearly would come under the auspices of a minor modification, because it's active. We already have engineers out. We've done the initial stormwater. For people to come in and review that doesn't necessarily require a full-blown refiling of a special permit, someone to review the stormwater management.
I'm sorry, Wally, have the stormwater management standards changed between then and now? I know we, I know.
I don't believe so, no, because this project just started a little while ago, so it should be under the same. But, you know, having someone take a look at the- having someone take a look at the stormwater management that's submitted with the application, that's a pretty common thing. But to go through a major modification requires a full-blown submission, and that part of it's not necessary. Now, the board can dictate, under a minor mod, what it wants to do without going through a full-blown special permit reapplication process, which is, in this case, is not necessary. But if you wanna send the stormwater management out to have an eyeball, that's well within the board's purview to do that. Having the public take a look, the surrounding people, this isn't really that much of a change, however, is public record. So clearly, that needs to be available to anyone that wants to see it, you know, talk about the meetings. As you know, anything we send out for review is also public record, so everybody gets a copy of it. There's no hiding anything.
How about this? How about this? As far as timeline, how are the timelines between if this is deemed a minor modification and a major modification different, if at all?
The major modification typically comes in on a couple of different avenues. Let's say someone came in and did a special permit, and they were gonna put one building up, and it was gonna be an industrial manufacturing company. And then they decided to come back in, and they're gonna put seven buildings up, and they're gonna be all restaurants and housing. That's considered a major modification. Okay, going through the process. What this, in the timeline, is the biggest thing. When you have an active project, everybody's out there looking at this. It doesn't sit, and it hasn't been completed like Harper's property was. That's been completed at SC Park a long time ago. I'm gonna say a decade, and somebody can check that data they want, but that was dormant. And then if you start switching engineers and also what the actual plan was, although Harper submitted something similar to what he wanted to do a decade ago, and the board approved that, it changed. The type of batuminous changed, the impervious surface changed, stormwater management did change. So that's probably what triggered that one in. But this particular one, where it clearly should come under the minor modification change with particulars of the board. If it's gonna change the stormwater management a little bit and clearly have somebody take a look at it, that's great. But it doesn't require a full-blown special permit start-to-finish process with an active subdivision, I mean, an active project, and just minor changes, because it's under the same category of what it was submitted for, the storage.
I guess, I guess what I'm having a little trouble with, and, you know, this just could be that I'm, you know, relatively new, but I'm trying to distinguish between subjective and objective requirements as between a major and a minor modification. It's, you know, like, is it the square footage that changes that's different from, you know, the original plan? Is it the type of use? I do, I do take, you know, Mr. Sorenson's point about the age of that other project. That was something that was very concerning to the board. This is very different than that. So I guess I'm having trouble, you know, determining what are the factors that are gonna be the things that, you know, decide whether this thing should be a minor or a major modification? What are the objective factors?
I mean, that's, I'm kinda aligned with you. I mean, I would think that there should be very clear definitions, again, notwithstanding all the other things definitely a factor, absolutely. But-
Is there a place where this is written down?
There should be a clear line of delineation, what says this is major, this is minor, because at the end of the day, this is all very legal definitions, right? So that needs to be worked out that way. I've been trying to do searches from the state of Massachusetts site on it, and I can't find anything. But I found something from the town of Maynard, and they have very clear definitions as to what's major and what's minor, according to the definition of what's being done to the site. So I would think that-
In the town of Groveland, we've done this, guys, over the decades, quite a few times. It is the subjective of the board, okay? We've seen major and minor modifications with subdivision plans too, coming through, but mostly the effect of special permits in the zoning areas here. You have to consider the whole picture. You've gotta consider, what is the site that it is now? Has it changed dramatically from its intended use? And on this particular one, no, it's still storage. Okay, has the stormwater management, has it flooded anybody out? They submitted a package with the stormwater in it to take a look at, and the engineers' conclusions on that. Now, that is certainly something that everybody wants to just confirm on any application coming in. But it is subjective with the major modification, unless it's so blatantly different. Okay, we're gonna not do Project A on industrial buildings, and now we're gonna do a completely different Forty-B. So that obviously is that dramatic.
So Wally-
And the time.
Wally, so what I was gonna say next is, we actually, we have the engineer here from the site. It's Ian. Ian McKenna is here.
Okay.
Yeah. Yes, I'm gonna need to get you.
Here, here.
Take that one. And then he can, he can talk more on the details and what the major differences are and answer any questions that we might have as well.
Yeah.
As, Ian, did you, the application, I couldn't, I looked through the downloaded package, but I couldn't, I saw all the engineering data. Is the application before, for a minor modification?
Yeah, that was our intent, and that's where I think it's good, hearing you guys speak about it, is somewhere on the board might recall, so the original approval for this was in August of two thousand twenty-three, for the full, full site for all the buildings. And then it was either late two thousand twenty-three or early two thousand twenty-four, prior to construction. We actually did come back in, it actually might have been during construction. There was some, based on the site contractor's work out there, there was a desire to add riprap to the site to stabilize some slopes that we had shown as being grassed. Correct me, it was two thousand twenty-four, it was during construction. There was issues from water from a budding property, and that was a separate issue. It was actually causing problems during construction, so because of that, there's several areas that riprap wanted to be added. It was a surface change. That was an item that did require us to look at. We updated the plans with that additional riprap area, updated the stormwater analysis, and that was a minor modification that did go to T. E. C. kind of as a, I think it was, I believe the way the board did it is, we did submit some materials ahead of time. I believe Pete was at that meeting, but then what came of that is the board just kind of left it to my office and T. E. C. to kind of agree on, okay, yep, this is, T. E. C. basically, if they gave their recommendation, that was the sign-off. So it was kind of a condition of the board of the minor site, the minor modification, so that we didn't need to keep coming back. But that's why with the updated application, one of the things that we included wasn't in the updated drainage analysis, is that this site, those of you who might recall, is somewhat unique, where there is really no natural discharge point from this site. Nelson Street, I guess you could call, is the low point. Everybody that fronts on it, Nelson Street floods pretty regularly. So that's why, as part of what I'll call Brad's first project, which was the two buildings closest to Nelson Street, we did a pond up along Nelson Street that actually was designed to hopefully encourage more infiltration of runoff from Nelson Street. And then when we came in with this next project, with what we're now showing is six buildings, it was four before. That's why there's that large stormwater infiltration basin. Essentially, we had to infiltrate as much as possible. Stormwater doesn't actually leave the pond, I think, until after like the twenty-five-year storm event. So because we couldn't discharge water to any abutting areas that were downstream, it's essentially a self-contained site where we had to maximize the infiltration on our existing stormwater. So that's why, as part of the updated, what I submitted to this group, and I do have a copy of it here, but I included a table that I didn't include previously, because what we felt was, for this minor modification, we have three buildings in, we have the stormwater pond built, we have an as-built site plan. I think it was, it's the second sheet in your set that proved that it was built per plan. So what we felt was really the best analysis point for this change, and this goes to during the process of approval. The board was really interested in, okay, how does the pond work? We don't care so much of, hey, where's the, where's the analysis point offsite? It's, how does that, how do the elevations work in that pond? So one thing that we did is include a table, and like I said, this was in the drainage analysis, under the executive summary. I do have a copy that I can share. But what I showed is, I showed what the, essentially, the ponding elevation was in that pond under the approval that the board granted us previously. And then I, in the next column, was what that proposed ponding elevation is under this revision. It was discussed, it's seen on Sheet C. Three, but we are proposing a slight increase to the size of the pond. We're talking tens of cubic yards of material removed. That's on the northwest corner of the pond on the plan. If you're on Sheet C. Three, you'll kind of see a call out there to expand the pond area. So the combination of that slight expansion helped, obviously, keep us, we had no increases in ponding elevation in any of the storm events that includes the one-hundred-year storm. The reason we did that is just some of the nuances of the way HydroCAD drainage software works. We're in a small area. It's software that is honestly not designed for small areas, but the whole industry uses it. So it's kind of a nuance that we had to do that small pond expansion. But we made sure when we did that, that we also, really, what we were looking at is making sure we weren't ponding in that infiltration basin any higher than what was approved by the board under the original approval. And that comparison would have been to, again, that last version that the board approved and T. E. C. signed off as, under that previous minor modification. So very minor changes really to the site in terms of stormwater. It's just some, some relocations of some previous drainage structures. And as, you know, the, on these plans, one thing really that we, I spent the most time on was we, the existing conditions base that you see here is the actual as-built survey. It was a really nice as-built survey of as-built topography. One thing I told Brad is because it was in CAD, I was able to underlay it under our approved design, and it was spot-on. So it's always nice to see. I generally, probably one of the most detailed as-built surveys I've ever seen. So that we made sure that, again, when this gets handed to a contractor, it is hundred percent what's out there today. Again, very, it was, you know, within construction tolerances of what the approved design was, which is good to see. But we did take the time to make sure that that latest base was used on these plans just to reduce it, eliminate any confusion with the contractors. So, again, it was, you know, again, to go back, the reason for this proposal for the change was just, and we kind of knew this when we went in for the original approval, was that it was gonna end up being a two-story climate-controlled, with kind of part of it was buried to the hill. It was gonna be a complex structure. At the time, it was a way to kind of maximize building area on the site. We balanced some climate-controlled with what's already built today. But based on the market, and then it just, I think, you know, Brad's looked into some of the costs to engineer a building like that. It certainly doesn't pencil out with the way, I think, material costs have gone too. And it's a significant increase in material costs for that type of structure. So we did lose building area, but they're just gonna be the standard drive-up that we, you know, that works there today. And there's, there's been a demand for them. So that's really why we're, why this transition happened, and so we just tried to, we gave a full plan set for the update, again, just so that the board has all the information they need when it's put on file, and then a contractor can build it.
If Rebecca, if they, if they worked with T. E. C. to address the concern in the fire department, to address the concerns that you raised, would that change your opinion as to whether, if everything worked out and those things, those issues were resolved, would that change your opinion as to whether it would be a major or a minor modification?
They would not. They went from proposing three separate buildings to now proposing one building. In my-
Isn't it the other way, the other way around?
So in my professional opinion, that would mean that that is a major modification. It doesn't, we're not asking them for additional fees, we're not asking for, you know, all these different filings. We're just asking it to be reviewed as a major modification, which would require the same amount of time to have T. E. C. review the stormwater as being proposed right now.
So the dispositive, so the dispositive factor for you is that it's different structures?
Very much so. I view that as a major modification. It's not a signed relocation, it's not, you know, you know, we're gonna twist the building slightly if you're literally taking away and adding structures to the site. And even though that lessens the impervious area, it's still a major change.
Is there, is there anywhere where there's some definitions of major or minor?
I've been scouring the internet the last five minutes for it.
Yeah.
There are several towns across the Commonwealth have that defined. We do not, it looks like. I think it'd be in the board's best interest moving forward after this to learn our lessons and define that within the bylaws to say, this is, you know, line of delineation between major and minor modification, and we can set all the parameters there for us. Obviously, it doesn't exist right now, so it is up to board discretion, to Wally's earlier point. But I think-
Guys, I think the reason, the reason that it has never been is because it's hard to nail that down to specifics, because sites themselves, okay, are all different. So what may be a major modification in one site may not be in another. So it's always been subjective to the board. And remember, this is the board's decision. This isn't any other departments or any other people. This is clearly the elected board that makes this decision, and we can add certain things onto that. I mean, you can approve a minor modification, okay, with particulars, and I would recommend the board do that. If there's a question on something, then let's get it answered by the both engineers. I think Ian mentioned earlier, when we had the previous one, and this is typical. We let the engineers duke it out on their own time, and then they come into the board with what the conclusions of that is. Okay, and just asking, because he's there, have you talked about this to T. E. C.? And have they raised any, or given you any input either way?
No, Wally, we haven't reached out to them yet, knowing I didn't wanna jump through any hoops that needed to go through the town first. So it, like you kind of stated, we've worked with them extensively previously with this project too, and we've worked with them on plenty of other projects as well. So we figured, again, understanding it was the board's decision, we didn't wanna reach out to anybody until we knew what the path forward was.
Major or minor, major or minor, it's still something that I think, I mean, I'm asking the board. You know, we would want T. E. C. to review anyway, regardless of whether this is a major or a minor. So what I would propose then is that we agree tonight to have them, you know, conduct that review and work together and try to see what they can do. And between now and maybe the next meeting, we try to all put our heads together and start, try to define what major and minor means, and then say, hey, listen, we say that this is a major or a minor because these factors. And, you know, and then maybe trying to write them into the bylaws as to, this is how we're gonna determine in the future what's major and minor. And there are, I don't think it's completely subjective. I think, I think there are factors that can be taken into consideration, and maybe one's not dispositive, but building size, building, you know, consistency, how long it's been since the plan was approved, that seems important. So I think you could have a list of factors that you could consider and still have.
Agreed.
You know, it could still be viable for multiple projects, but-
I have a question for Ian. So do you have a total square footage of existing versus what the proposed of impervious? It will be, is, I can, it looks like there is more, with the proposed, there's more impervious.
Yeah, there's kind of-
Look at some of the, I looked at some of the rainwater, the stormwater management numbers, and they are very close, right?
Yeah. I mean, we're talking single-digit percentages.
Correct.
And that was what I was gonna add to is, the way you talked about is, probably in the last year, I've heard, been at four or five different towns. Like, wait, we don't have a definition of what that threshold is. And so some towns, it is, I think to your point, you'll find, I think it's in the purview of towns, it happens in New Hampshire, Maine as well. There, it is subjective until a town decides, hey, here's a threshold. So sometimes it's a X amount of square foot of impervious, but they might do a, hey, we let you go plus. And sometimes actually towns say you can't go plus or minus, like they don't wanna see a significant reduction either. But sometimes there's an impervious threshold, say twenty-five hundred square feet, and a building threshold of a thousand. That, you know, I have no idea how they come up with those numbers, but I think, just hearing you guys talk about it, I think it sounds like it's very common for towns to, I think, as Wally said, it's hard to know each site's unique, but somebody at one time just said, this is a comfortable number of, and, you know, I guess the town generally knows, are you getting giant big-box stores with hundreds of thousands of square feet? Well, that's, you know, a thousand square feet, you could, an architect could change that in a matter of thirty minutes on a plan.
Right.
It's very different than something like this size.
Yeah, and again, very much to Wally's point, you know, there's not gonna be able to have one encompassing list that says, hey, you know, this is gonna be our one source for every single thing that could come up. Obviously, that can't be all-encompassing to that extent.
Yeah.
But we can say, to your point, you know, whether it's, you know, additional reduction of X amount of square footage or impervious surfaces or drainage impacted this, or, you know, we can put some generalities in place. You know, just for the applicant to know as well that when they're putting this forward, they know whether it's a major or minor within a certain realm of, okay, this is out of the box, so I don't, you know, the guidelines don't give me that answer. But to a large extent, ninety percent of people will be able to make that determination by what we've set out, and that's, will help them in their process. we've set out and that's, will help them in their process as well.
Well, right. In this very process, if I said to you, why is this a minor and not a major modification? What's your answer?
Everything I've told you, and I don't really have a, yeah, exactly.
A hundred percent.
And that's why, yeah.
And, and it sounds reasonable and Rebecca has a reasonable point on the other, on the other point. And so trying to figuring out, figuring out what is a good standard is something that's worthwhile use of the board's time, certainly.
And I, and I think, and Brad, feel free to yell at me, but I, I think we understand, because we're, we went through this with the last minor modification. I think there is a change, whether it was, you know, miniscule or not to the stormwater, that TEC reviewing this, I think in some capacity with, you know, the understanding of, hey, what were, what are they being asked to review, uh, which I could easily outline for them. And that's why I kind of revised the letter. I think that makes sense no matter what. I believe, and I think Rebecca touched upon this, is that the difference would be the major would be sent back out for, um, a butter notification. So then, uh, just to your point of the next meeting deciding, the only difference is the next meeting, if it's a major.
Yeah.
We would potentially be put, if you chose it's a major then, we're then pushed to another meeting because of the notice. So, I, I think that's kind of the, the distinction is really the, the public notice component. Staff isn't recommending any, uh, new fees. It was certainly a concern of ours because of the, the, the large fee for the special permit. But I think, whether, either one, I think we've understood that TEC will need to look at it and-
How long do you think you, that it'll, I mean, and I'm, I mean, it is a guess, I understand.
Yeah.
Like, do you, do you have a ballpark of how long you think it would be so you guys can put your heads together and kind of get, come to a consensus?
I'd send an email to TEC tomorrow. And, and I, in the past, right, I'll, I'll provide them with a document and I usually bullet point for them my thinking. And sometimes it's jargon that maybe the two of us would understand better than other people.
Sure.
And I think in the past, you know, TEC was generally pretty quick about responding. I don't know how that process works if Brad needs to have some sort of agreement to just cover the cost or if they need to assess and then provide a fee. I don't know how that, uh, would work, uh, in either minor or major, they're going to look at it, so.
So to go back to the, the question, do you have what the total square footage of impervious from existing to what proposed is?
Yeah, so the total impervious approved, uh, was just, just under 115,000. The total proposed is 119,000. It's a, it 1.5% increase, mostly because of, even though there's a reduction in building area, because these are drive-up units, there was a shift there of now you need some pavement to get to them. Still under the 50% that the town has. But again, that's what contributed to some of the nuances of why there was a pond expansion. And to be honest, I spent an hour looking at it, like it didn't make sense to me, but sometimes it's the way the model works.
So it's an increase of about 4,000, give or take, square feet?
Total, yeah. So, um, yeah, I think on the, on the, in terms of the site, it's a 1.5% change. Yeah.
And you said-
So I think, I just tried to throw something in there. I think you guys are on the right track for, for this particular application and for what, and thank you Ian for, for pointing out all this stuff. I think what the board should do is, is approve the minor with conditions. And if it comes back something different with the TEC, that's what I meant earlier when I said let the engineers battle it out in their own time, because that's exactly what Ian just mentioned. And then for future projects, I do understand to try to get it in outline, and I'll call it an outline because it's still going to be somewhat subjective. I don't think you can nail it 100%. But you can clearly get an outline down with the difference between the majors and the minors. As far as public, the public getting notification on something, uh, again, these are televised meetings. I mean, you can send the notice, it doesn't have to go out certified, but you can send the notices out so everyone's aware of it. If that's wha, what the board would like to do. But I, I think the biggest thing is to, um, float the approval on the minor with conditions. And if it comes back something, if TEC says, no, we, we, we found this or that and we're going to have to go through the major. And it is under the board's privy, uh, thanks Rebecca, that we could waive the fees and the application. And then the process is really the same. If, if you're sending stuff out for review, yeah, the only difference is a hearing notice. And that's it. The, it still has to be reviewed, it still has to be approved by the board. The board has to make a decision on it. It still has to be written, et cetera. So that's the only difference if we're waiving a full-blown special permit refiling, which would typically happen under a major modification. And that's why I think this qualifies as a minor with conditions. And that's, that's, I think everybody's on the right track, we're just trying to figure where it is. But the future, we're all, the boards together, I can see it and hear it, that we need to find out which is which.
Ian, the total square footage of the revise is less than the originally approved?
No, it's a slight increase. It's, it's a reduction in building area. So there's, it used to be that there was just a large amount of building area, there was that 30,000 something square feet that just went straight to the pond. Now like, the site's broken up. So it is, the overall impervious is a 1.5% increase.
I mean, what I mean is the total square footage of the building.
Oh, that is, yeah, that is reduced by, uh, fifty, just under 7,000, about 7,500 square foot reduction in building area. So, yeah.
Thinking about this and having us talk about it, I see some categories. And the categories that I see are square foot of impervious is something that was important, uh, number and type of buildings, right? Total square footage, you know, as far as usable square footage, the type of use, impact to butters and, and other, you know, like environmental things and timing. You know, those seem to be the kind of universe of factors that we seem to be considering. And short of, uh, you know, like a minor, a small, I don't want to use the word minor, small difference between the impervious and then obviously three buildings instead of one building. It seems like these other, these other factors, so long as TEC was on board, so long as the butters have a chance to talk about it, so long as the fire says okay, it seems to me that those kind of factors would mitigate in favor of it being classified as a minor. If there's some, if there's some other factors that I'm not seeing or thinking about, I'd love to hear what other people have to say.
I, I know Jason, you were about to-
Yeah, I've become curious, you're 1.5%, is that for the total site?
Yeah.
Uh, phase one and two or just phase two?
That's actually, that actually also accounts for the adjacent parcel on Nelson Street as well. So it's actually two lots.
So it's 1.5% of the entire site?
Yeah, everything up to Nelson-
Versus what's just changed on the, the second phase of what he submitted?
Right. So, yeah, that, that total percentage is the board asked, they were, they're, they're still separate lots, but the board asked that, again, they be, they're connected. So we look, that's what that percentage is across two lots, every storage building.
Yeah. So that, that percentage of what's actually changing is, is quite a bit different.
Do you think it's greater based on the fact that it's in this area?
Yeah. This area here.
I agree with you, Jason.
Now you have, you also have, um, to look at the, um, elevation change. You have some pretty substantial elevation change, uh, next to the original building on the drawing from 115 to 107. And I don't know how that would affect, I mean, I imagine going down would prevent anything from coming off, but I don't have necessarily the elevation of the property next door or how much closer to that property line that that pavement goes. And I think that notification, the way that we get the notification to the butters is through certified mail because that guarantees it went out. So I think, I think the fact that we have agreed to, um, forego any additional fees that, uh, major would just make everything clean, tight, make sure everything got reviewed properly, that we didn't miss anything and that the butters were notified and had an opportunity to see that there's going to be some significant changes to what they'll be looking at, potentially.
It's, it's valid, it's valid points. I mean, we, we all have valid points. I'm, you looking here on the existing, that front half is at 115. It looks like the front of the, on the Salem Street side looks to be the same grade, but if you go to the back of the building, uh, or the middle of the old approved is one, starts at 112, whereas the new proposed is at 107. So it's dropping off from 107.
Yeah. Towards the front, it's 115.
Dropping down five, five feet of elevation.
Yeah, anywhere from five to-
Yeah.
Eight feet.
Because the original approved larger building always had kind of one story exposed from the, the Salem Street. And then as you moved around the building, we, we exposed a large portion as a two-story, again, at that lower elevation. Now all of that gray drop just happens in that first building. It's still a two-story building from Salem Street, it's still one, so it'll be the same height. But we're now just transitioning down faster, um, you know, looking from building to building.
The, so, and I guess I'll go back because Jason brought up a good point, because I was actually, when I was asking the question, I wasn't basing it upon impervious of the entire site, including Nelson Street. I'm talking just on, when you look at C3 within that blue border boundary, um, from the, the existing, what the existing plan shows and what the proposed plan shows, what is the difference in square footage of that impervious?
So the, the 4,000 square foot, or, yeah, the 4,000 square foot difference would be the change. All the changes occurs in that area. But in terms of like, I think what you're saying is the, is the 4,000 over X, it's over, you're looking at that. I don't have the-
The percentage is much higher because it's based on that average.
It would be under, yeah, my, my denominator on the fractions hires or lowers, so it's a higher percentage. But the 4,000, the only changes on the site are just, like you said, that blue line is kind of the phase line we're using.
Right.
Uh, that's, that's where all that changed.
So in that area, there's 4,000 square foot additional impervious. So in his, his, how I, I'm visualizing and seeing and thinking about all this, so we have multiple, we have different situations here. So, talking about SD Park, right, that was what you spoke about earlier. He wanted to change the impervious part of it. And because that plan was so out of date that we said we really should look at this as a major modification because it was, the, things have changed and we need to re, review.
Standards have changed.
Correct. And that was years after.
It was, it was a pretty clear case because of that factor being so strong.
This one here, I, agreed, it's a lot more, it's in, within tune of the same timeline that we've, we've kind of all been on the same board, working together and seeing it. I do, but my concern is that our past practice, we've had Annie, Sam, Rebecca looking and reviewing these things and making determinations and giving us what they feel as though is guidance. And we have, for the most part, will follow what their guidance is because they're going out there and they're looking at it. So now, and I'm not saying one, one way, what we're doing, but now we're going against that, which is fine to do that. But we have been following suit and saying, okay, so now, and we're just, we're looking at it ourselves and making our own determination, right? So that's, that's one part of my thought process. And then also with what Wally's saying is, yeah, there's a def, it's a great option of making it a minor modification, but throwing in, we still need TEC to look at this, this area. We still need the fire department to make sure they get a sign-off. And then the butter notice, I'm really not, like, I do feel as though a butters should be notified, that they're no longer going to have one building, it's going to be three buildings. I, I would like to have a heads up, right? I wanted a heads up today that my power was going out for, for a day, just to give, just want the heads up, right?
And you'd want them to have a chance to be heard.
Correct. Just to be able to come and say, hey, I, wait a minute, you're now putting three buildings there instead of one? Now it's going to be drive-up instead of all-inclusive, one big building with a climate-controlled. I, I think that anyone that would, if any one of us lived next door, we would have liked, we would like to know that this is changing.
Well, and I think that underscores-
It's my thought process.
Again, to go over the, the future, future board problems, um, I think that underscores the need to have some definitions put around this as well.
Agreed.
Because me living in this now, I honestly feel like this is major. But I also wish there was guidelines around that, that better framed what was major or minor to help that decision. Not just my opinion on what this is, because it shouldn't be based on an opinion. It should be based on what we laid out at, through the town as-
Right, standards.
What is, is going to be the standard for going forward, right?
But the-
I have a practical question.
Okay.
Timeline, major versus minor, especially with now the fees being waived, what's the substantive difference to, you know, to, to this project going forward and the timeline under which it goes forward? Is it delayed? Do we think it's delayed by, you know, a month or two because, you know, if it's a major? Or, you know, like, what do, if, if we were gonna, if we were gonna have minor plus modifications, the modification we would have, our review by TEC, fire has to come in and, you know, confirm everything's cool. And we'd want the public to have, the, the butters to have a chance to come and be heard. That sounds like the same stuff we'd do if it was major. Like, uh, so I don't, I don't see the substantive difference.
It's a, it's a little different.
Okay.
It's the, the minor, the minor modification, you, you, the board, and it's the board's discretion, by the way, and has always been the board that decides these things. Input from, from other boards, other departments is always welcome, but then it's never the guidance to just hook, line and sinker a yes, because it's the planning board that is elected and that has the authority to do these things. Other departments clearly share conservation, you know, it's nice to get zoning inputs and stuff like that. And if they have decisions, those, remember, all those get folded right into our memorandums of decisions and we actually have print in there that any decision the conservation makes or zoning, uh, the planning board enforces, uh, under the map, total memorandum, and we can suspend the whole thing or revocate under memorandum. The difference between the major and the minor is the filing, okay? A major modification does require a full set of plans to be filed, a special permit application to be refiled, the whole process to start over. A minor modification, okay, can have and does have and typically shall have, uh, things that the board needs to look, look for. Okay, a TEC review, go in there. And guess what? You still have to write a decision on their minor modification. It's not a given. You still have to write, okay, we still need fire department to sign off. We still need, uh, TEC's approval on this. We need to take a look at that. If anything that TEC pops up with a review, okay, just like any other review that they get, okay, those things have to be addressed. So it's not a given process, but if you do come under the category of the major, okay, it does trigger the full special permit, the fees the board can always waive on, on any application. As far as notifying the butters, that's an easy one, okay? Uh, the, the butters can be notified for the next meeting, um, or the meeting after, whatever the meeting's going to be, once the review comes back to CEC, but, you know, figure that out, it's not going to be tomorrow and it's not going to be next week. And notices can go out, there's no problem with that at all. And you're right, you want to give somebody a heads up.
I guess that's what I'm, what I'm thinking in my brain, right? If, if these things, the TEC review and back and forth discussions with fire, and then the notices for, say, the very next meeting about this, this change could all happen within the next eight, two, two weeks, then nobody's losing any time, or at least, it doesn't seem so to me. If by contrast, things went as a major, then what additional, what additional stuff has to happen that requires extra time and lead time?
Well, it's a full-blown special, it's a whole new special permit filing.
What is the-
So it starts the process all over again.
It's a full plan set.
So it's a full plan set?
Yeah.
Full stormwater that's been presented to you today?
Right.
That has already been done. The work has already been done.
The only thing I was going to add is a 14-day notice?
It would be a 14-day notice. The next meeting is not for another week, so the time for the review would not happen next week. So you'd have to push yourself out into August, which would allow us to notify 14 days in advance and would push TEC to get you a memo prior to that meeting in order to, to, to meet the filing deadlines. So there is no time lost, in my opinion, because TEC's not going to review this and get a decision for you the next meeting. And you're not going to have a decision for the applicant the next meeting.
So we think either way, under either situation, this is probably a month out and then we're make, we're able to make a decision, a yes decision, yes if it's major or yes if it's minor with conditions, right?
I think the only thing is if you're going to notice, you would just want to, I guess, have a consensus of major, just, otherwise you wouldn't go through the effort of noticing I think the only thing is if you're gonna notice, you would just wanna, I guess, have a consensus of major, just, otherwise you wouldn't go through the effort of noticing it.
Well, well, that, that's why I was, I was on the other opinion too, that if, if we're gonna say, notice, I mean, again, I've, I've made my opinion known. I think this is a major modification. I, I think we should proceed as such to, to the point, most of the work seems to have been done. All the reviews that are gonna be, gonna, gonna be asked for will be asked for anyways, um, as well as the, a butter notification. And it doesn't seem to be any detriment to the timeframe to the work either. So, in my, in my opinion, I don't know why we wouldn't proceed with, with a major modification on this.
Jason, what do you think about it?
No, I agree a hundred percent.
Um, with the refiling, so I think, do we need any vote from the board? Again, if, if the board were to say major modification, want to refile those applications. I think I've heard some interest in the board waiving any new fees as part of that. Would the, would you physically want us to resubmit the application, the actual physical application form with cover letter and just revise as needed?
Could do that.
Okay, and obviously we have all of that, it would just, kind of just, I'll check numbers and stuff like that, redate things. If, if that is what the board chooses.
D J, what's your leaning?
I, I mean, looking at it, four thousand square feet difference in just that one area, seems to me to be, it's a major. But, it's like you said, if we do a minor and we put all of these additional stipulations of fire, stormwater to be reviewed, a butter notice, we're doing that anyway, it's basically, it's basically-
Being treated as a major.
As a major, but if, in lieu of the fees. So, that's where I, I don't know fees, right? I don't know, what are, what are we, we're setting, with that part of it, we're setting a precedent.
Yeah, is, is it within our realm to waive the fees on a major modification?
Yes.
We, we, the town can waive the fee on anything. And I, I-
Which I think, which I think we're well-
I'd like the board to, and I'll, and I'll float it, a, a motion to approve for minor modification with conditions of the board, including, and let's list them, and that covers it. You also might be setting a precedent, I, I don't know who said that, but you might be right. If you start, start doing things other than, uh, you know, throw everything under the category of major modification, okay, there is a lot more involved with that. And there shouldn't be, uh, I know the changes, and we've gone over the square footages and the, and the drainage and those changes. But we have an active special permit and an active construction project. This is not something that lapsed or is ending up to be completely different. So, you can, I would float that motion for a minor mod with conditions to keep it in that category. And if it includes notice the butters, that's great. And guess what? If, if this goes out to T E C and can, they come back and they find something else, well, then we're gonna have to do something else. And, cause this still has to have a decision and approvals for everybody going in. I, I really don't think the board should be leaning towards every time a change comes in, unless it's dramatic, on active decisions, uh, to throw everything under the major modification category, unless it's blatantly different. And that would be the motion that I, that I'd like to send out to the board.
Okay, motion, alright. So, there has been a motion made, uh, Wally, you, that is to have a minor, to approve this as a minor modification with the stipulations of T E C review on stormwater management. We have fire department review, a butter, with a butter, butter notice as well.
Correct. And if there's anything else you wanna tag on with that, um, remember, T E C does have to make a, an input. And they came back, would, would they want something different? And that will be part of the approval as well. This is, this is no free ride.
So, what, what do you mean by where T E, if T E C comes back and says that they may-
Well, you need a T E C review. So, if T E C puts in its review and adds something on it, other than the fire department takes a look at it and we took at it, you know, just like we do any other review with T E C, it comes back with, we approve it with these conditions. Or, this should change, or we need more information on that. That's what I'm referring to.
Yeah, I, I think we're, I mean, with the two, right? Major versus the minor, with this, it's semantics, right? It's kind of the same, it, it looks like to be the same thing, but we're just getting away from the major.
I think so too. I think, I think with the, adding all these caveats, i- if we're, if we're weighing that versus making it a major but waiving the fees, I, I think, I think there, this is kind of a form over substance. And I think in terms of precedent setting, you know, if people are putting down different buildings and things like that, you know, like, I can understand why it would be-
Yeah, before we, as I apologize, Wally's floating, floating a motion.
Oh, sorry.
Does anyone wanna second that motion and then we can have a further discussion if need be? Okay, so let's keep talking. Cause I think we're, we're still, we're, I think we're all a little bit hindering back and forth, so we're not really sure, right? I think we're leaning towards major, but we wanna work it out, right?
I, I mean, just in terms of precedent, just, just cause we were talking about that. I would be more worried that having, again, this is, really is a substantial change to the area and to the building shape layout and appearance from all angles. I'd be worried about setting a precedent of that not being a major modification.
Yeah.
Rather than sending it to precedent as having a major modification. Because to, to me, this screams, this is a major change to, to, to the plan. You know, you, you know, I, I don't see anywhere on-
Like Jason said, even elevation, right? And I know that's, now it's gonna be impervious, where I don't know, around the building probably was pervious before. So, that changes the calculate, I'm sure changed the calculations. I don't know anything about that, right? But you can see that the impervious is extended further out. It's probably, the drainage can all work its way out and be controlled. That's just one, that's one part of it, right? It's part of the stormwater altogether. But four thousand square additional feet of impervious with the elevation stuff, change of the building, I, okay. I wanna, and, and I'm gonna just call it out, I mean, Brad had to recuse himself, right? This is, this is his property, right? If this wasn't Brad's property, would we be sitting here and debating it?
Trying to squeeze this into a minor?
And I, I just wanna call that.
Yeah, that's reasonable.
I just wanna do the right thing. That's ultimately all it is, is do the right thing. And when you look at aspects of this, there's three or four that were saying, this could be a major, right? And then, as well as we have the recommendation coming from our internal team, which part of that is Sam, who is our building inspector, is saying, I think this is a major modification as well. That's, that's where I'm teetering, right? I wanna make it, I want any builder to come in here and any, especially industrial, you know, commercial, to come in here and wanna do business with us, right?
And to know that they'll get a fair shake and they'll get treated the same as a board member on our board.
And this is also a resident that's doing business in town, right? And we wanna, we wanna do that as well. So, um, I wanna just do things the right, that's my thing, is I wanna do the things the right way and that's-
I think, I think it's a closer question than, than Chris seems to think. I think the total square footage is very similar, the type of use is identical. The impact in drainage will be sorted out with T E C. Uh, the butter issue, no matter how it gets handled, would be something that we're, we have a, we have an interest in hearing about. So, the differences are, I mean, the elevation changes, that's true. The building layout is certainly, you know, something that is significantly different. The timing mitigates in favor of the project. But I, I do think, I do think I'm on the side of, uh, calling it a major. But I, I think it's a lot closer, a, a lot of a closer question. I think it's a pretty close question.
And, and because of, not the timing, but the, the time of the project, right? It's an ongoing project, it's still in the middle of construction. Where, yes, it may be a major modification, but, um, we have, the applicants already paid the fees to do things. I'm, I'm okay with saying, okay, this is something where it's not, it hasn't been a year and a half, three years, ten years, that someone's coming back and saying, hey, I wanna make these changes. Well, then now you have a major and you're doing everything you're supposed to do. This is a current active project. We could do a major and then we have the right to wa, to waive the fees.
I think it's also a different category too, right? Like in Estee's Park, there's a, it becomes a major because there's different regulations. It, it's standards in place now versus what, fifteen years ago, or wherever I was. Fig me if I got that timeframe.
The project being so stale was independently another reason. I agree, I agree with you there too. I think that's, that's a very fair point.
You know, and that's not my concern on this front. My concern on this front is that literally the magnitude of the changes, which I think is substantial enough to warn, to warn a major. But again, going back to our earlier discussion as well, it shouldn't be clearly just the opinion of five, seven people to say this is a major or a minor. We should have this well-defined and we don't, which is to our, to our fault. So, I, that's going forward after this, I would very much like to-
Making an item.
Yeah, making an item.
And the other part of the timeline is, even if we do a major, the fact that we have all of the data here, that the engineering firms, communication, and then the butter notice, and then proper timeline, I think it's, it's not gonna change whether we do a minor with a bunch of caveats or just the major as it is. And it's still, it's still gonna fall within the same time, because I don't wanna hold up a project at the same time. And I don't feel as though whether we do a made, minor or a major, we're holding anything up.
Doesn't feel like reinventing the wheel in this.
Yeah, I, I think, you know, the, even with the recommendation of a minor with a butter, well, then at that point, it's literally just refiling of an application fee. So, I, I see where the board's kinda going that, when you're trying to fit this into a minor, you're adding caveats. Well, you're adding caveats that overlap with a major. I think, you know, we'd be comfortable, I, and we appreciate the board's, at least, interest in waiving the fees, primarily because one of them in particular is, is quite large and it is, is, whether from a numbers perspective, it's a four thousand over, you know, it's a, it's a small percentage change, but I understand from a visual perspective, that's where the change is. It sounds like it's going to T E C no matter what. I would say in either way, we would just wanna, I think it'd be fair to, just, and I'm happy to kinda outline those changes and kind of limit T E C's review to the changes, the pond changes. Understanding that like, you know, the, the scope of their areas is limited to review compared to, again, when, when you guys have a brand-new project, this happened with the original one, they, they do a deep dive through code, everything. And we have staff that reviews it against code. It's still fully compliant with zoning and everything else. But I think either way, I mean, that's the goal too, right? The better I do of outlining the changes, in theory, the faster the T E C can hone in on those edits and, you know, confirm that they are in fact-
Agreed.
Acceptable.
Uh, point of order, um, point for just a minute before we go through. Couple things to correct for the record, especially in a public hearing. It doesn't matter who the applicant is that comes before the board. It's a black and white issue. If it meets the regulation and if the board approves it, it flies. It doesn't matter if it's Harry, Sally, the guy next door, or even a, a board member. It doesn't matter, okay? And that should never come up in, in a hearing, be, because if it goes favoritism, and the planning board in my thirty-three years has never done that. It always has to meet the regulation, uh, going through. So, just, we, we can correct that forward. The other part is, it is solely the authority of the planning board. And I'm not sure where this started or how it started. No one else but the planning board has authority on memorandums, approvals, et cetera, except the individual elected officials of the planning board. And we gotta make that clear, because there have been things that have happened coming through from people that do not have the authority in the town of Groveland to make those decisions. And I'm not talking about the building inspector. Okay, he clearly has his own box, but guess what? The building and zoning enforcement officer cannot make a decision of the planning board, just as we can't do on their board. We are all subject to Mass General Law, Chapter forty-one. And that's where that authority comes from. Anyone else submitting anything, okay, is advisory only, and it should remain that way. And if, if there are things that are happening outside the board's notice or approval, and I do mean approval of a full motion of the board, okay, then that's illegal. So, just to keep that, well, I'm just stating it on, on as a point of order, just to go in there, that the fact that somebody submits something, says that's a good idea, well, are you on the board? No, well, then I'll take your advice, but I'm not gonna vote just cause you said so.
Correct.
Okay, and I've seen some, some other stuff with that.
I, Wally, I don't feel as though, since I've been here, that's been the case, that anyone's telling us that they, or we've been notified that there was a minor, uh, or a major change that was made to, uh, applicant.
Actually, not, not pointing that out on that, I was just, just putting it out for point of, point of order records, okay? And that it doesn't matter, because I, it, no one, it doesn't matter who you are. If it meets the regulation, it flies. That's it. It's black and white, it's not favoritism, it's not who you know, it's none of that. Okay, and it's never been that way. So, so, I'm glad that we got that out there. As far as the difference between the, well, good, thank you. So, a, as far as the minor modification goes, okay, y, y, you guys, again, it comes back to what the board is. You can't change the regulation or the processes of the board. And I can probably tell you, we've only had less than six of these in my thirty-three years on the board, as far as, you know, people coming in requesting modifications. This would be number two. The other one was over N S G Woods that I can remember. And I think we had one other one that comes to mind in the last twenty years that I can remember. So, they don't happen too often. And I think the board, it, it's great to have these discussions, but we have an applicant before us and I think the board means to make a decision. And then if we need to change the reg, by all means. When I wrote the subdivision control law with my comrades, I thought it was the greatest piece of legislation in nineteen ninety-six. And we proved, were proven wrong a couple of years later. It's a living document. And it's always meant to be added to, uh, if anything ever happens. But you can't hold an applicant, hey, we're gonna change the reg on you because we really don't have something. You can't really do that, okay? But you have an application before you if they, it, it's up to the applicant if he wants to withdraw the request for a minor or submit for a major, and they can discuss that. And they don't have to do it right now. They may also, the board can ask T E C, hey, what do you think? We don't have to vote on this tonight, okay? And you get a meeting in a week, you said, so we can get an answer. And then maybe the board's got a little more time to look at stuff. But we don't need to be going an hour discussing what we're gonna change in the future with a live applicant before us. I, I do believe it's good work. We used to have workshops with the board and, and I think this is clearly something we need to get on paper, so we have a guide. I agree with you.
I think each of us has, has stated on the record kind of where we're at. And so, and so I, I do think it's, uh, you know, and, and there's no indication that anybody has been coerced into saying anything or is being pushed around.
Um, ju, just for point of order, on the motion, are we vote, voting to request a type of modification? Or, so we're not approving the modification, we're just requesting it come in the form of a major or a minor?
That's correct.
Okay.
The motion that I, that I put out was to approve as a minor with conditions.
But has there been a major or major application?
That hasn't been-
So, we, we-
That was what I asked you, and what did you submit?
Because as Mr. Sorenson has repeated to say, it is the planning board's decision and the staff is not overstepping, and the staff is bringing it to the planning board to make the decision within their jurisdiction.
Okay, so this is straight, this is just a discussion, right? There is not a, uh, an actual application in front of us that we need to approve for a minor or saying negative? So, um, I think we've had our conversation.
Do we want it on the record that we're gonna waive the?
I was gonna say, so I think the original start, right? We submitted an email to the town staff and said, here's the changes. And then obviously, that's where we ended up here, cause again, this is a position where that, um, I would say it's fair, I don't really know what the vote would do or where, how it lives on the record in the public hearing. But if the board wanted to make a decision towards minor or major, it obviously just helps us move forward. I think, you know, I've been listening very intently. I think i- if this was a clear-cut case of, hey, minor, yeah, let's have T E C glance at it. You know, the, I, I could clearly see the interest in the board in notifying a butters. We're instantly cresting into major. Again, it would be, so, I, I think we're leaning towards at this point, it would be, I think it was even mentioned, probably messier to try and do a minor with a bunch of conditions that if the board, you know, is feeling the T E C and the butters, well, right there, we're already in major. We have documents that we can recycle essentially from the original permits, if we need to at least put those on file for, as amended. And I'd say that's all kind of, again, if, if the board's willing, uh, is willing to take a vote on the fees, obviously that, I think, would be amenable to a major. We have a lot of the information. If it's cleaner for the board, I think it's, uh, August twelfth is your next, or is it be the first? I'm not sure, I could use the first and third or the second and third?
First and third. We meet on, we meet on the twenty-second and then we meet again on the fifth is where it typically would go.
Okay, I'll be out of town on that first week, but I'm happy to join via Zoom if that's possible, um, for that. I don't wanna delay any further, but I think we would respond ASAP. But, so I guess, I think if it makes the boards recognizing the times, it makes the boards' lives easier. I think, I'm glad, I'm glad I forced the conversation for the board. I think you guys have found some, you create, I've created some more work for you, uh, on the bylaw side. But I, I think we'd be okay just to keep it moving with a major, uh, I guess, I guess, I don't know. I'll request if the board will take a vote on minor versus major and, um, consider a waiver fees.
I, I will make a motion to request a mo, major modification on eight thirty-three Sam Street with the caveat that all fees related to the said application will be waived by the board.
I'll second that motion.
Motion made and seconded? All those in favor?
Or do we have any, do we need any conversation?
I think the only thing I would add, sorry, is just, I answered, we would be responsible for a butter notification fees and T E C's time, correct? I think, our intent was more application fees, real, on the owner's-
Correct, correct, sorry, thank you.
I think that would probably be a problem.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, let's correct the motion.
So, uh, so, so- So modified, modified motion to request a major modification at 833 Salem Street with the caveat that any filing fees with the town would be waived.
Okay. And I'll second that.
Okay. Motion made and seconded. We have a, any discussion?
Just one discussion point. I agree with the way of the fees, and that does need to go unvote on record. For past practices, I will be a nay vote on going to a major mod unless the applicant is voluntarily withdrawing whatever he submitted, because I couldn't see all of it. Okay? And if he's filing a major modification, then that's what it is.
They haven't actually submitted anything, Wally?
Okay.
That, yeah, they didn't submit anything.
So we're not voting on a lie that out.
This is just to get an idea.
Correct. It wasn't one way or the other.
Okay. So is it the, okay, all right. So is it the applicant's premise that he's now going to request a filing under a major mod?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Okay. Then you have my support on that. I was under the auspices that he had actually filed a minor mod application, application. And if he did, we would have to vote on it up or down?
Yep, correct.
Okay, got it.
There was, there's currently no application. This is just a discussion on what we would do as a board, what our decision would likely lean towards. We've given that direction. And now we're just making that motion to waive the town fees.
Okay, all town fees, they've got the notifications going out. And the review is going to be limited to the, the change itself, not versus a full blown plan. Did I hear that correct?
Did you say the part of the review, the T E C?
Correct.
Yeah, correct.
Yeah. Yeah. So it's, it's going to be a small review.
That'll be part of the application, not that we have to say, talk about now.
Okay. And then he will submit the applicant. I didn't hear a date. So you think in a couple of weeks, we'll actually see the application or will it come in before that? To get the ball rolling.
We meet the 22nd, so we'd be able to.
Okay.
It's prior to, if I would assume you.
Yeah. I mean, we can just approve the process on the 22nd. You know what I mean? If he's actually submitting the app.
Hold on, Wally. I didn't, hold on one second. Ian was saying something.
I was just going to say, I couldn't find them. I was trying to look it up on my phone if there was a schedule there. I assume we would need to follow the kind of prescribed X number of days prior to for acceptance. So I didn't know if you knew that.
So, I mean.
Like legally, what date that application needed to be here at Town Hall?
Technically, I mean, you pretty much have all of the information except for the actual application itself. Otherwise, you have every, you've submitted everything. So we would just timestamp that application that you would submit. So I mean, if you literally were able to get us something this week, we could, we could get it advertised the following week for the meeting on August 5th.
Okay. I can, I can, it lives as a PDF. I can email it to you and then I can have hard copies mailed tomorrow. So if that, for that application part of it, yeah.
Okay, cool.
Because the butter notification doesn't have to go out until seven days prior to the meeting. So there is still time to get that information and I can expedite that process for you.
Okay, all right.
Okay. Can you modify the, the, the motion to include that the board approves the acceptance? The board accepts the filing on the date, whatever it comes in, so that it doesn't have to be a delay? In other words, you don't have to do it in a meeting?
I mean, I don't know that we need to do that, do we?
Well, I'm just saying for the, Rebecca already said what she's going to do. If he can get that application in a couple of days, then boom, it goes out. That's all. That's what I was just looking at.
I mean, the date that the application is stamped in is the date the application is stamped in. So it's.
It is, I'll explain that later. But anyway, if everybody's under the agreement with that, there's a reason why I asked that question. But let's just carry on and go which way you're going with this.
Okay. So.
So vote on the motion. Chris Goodwin, aye.
DJ McNulty, aye.
Patrick Molina, aye.
Jason Neves, aye.
Wally, aye.
So moved. Motion made and passed.
And so you're good with me. Rebecca, L C C U. Actually, I think last I dealt with was Pete, but I don't think he's your point person anymore at T C, right?
I believe he's still our point person, but I think he has a junior engineer. So if you're.
Start with him now.
So I'll reach out to him for, with the information and get a proposal, so that you can agree to the price. If the price is not sufficient, then we can shop that out to other engineering firms. And hopefully we can just get that done quickly and then we can go from there.
Okay. And then the only, this is like, this will take 60 seconds. Just one thing, I know I submitted the as-built plan to you guys as part of this second sheet. I do know, because I track the beautiful conditions of approval from the original project, I believe by just submitting the as-built plan, I believe it satisfies, oh geez, now I got to find which condition it was. I think the request or the condition was that the as-built plan just needs to be submitted. I don't know, I didn't know if there's anything we need to do to close out what's there today for any sort of bonding or anything like that. And this could be something, again, I don't know if that's something to think about, but I don't know how we need to file.
Yeah, it'd have to be an agenda item.
Okay. Well, I'll, we'll work on, we'll add that as, when we come back, we'll do that as a separate item if we need to, just to reaffirm and close out anything on that phase one. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Ian.
Thank you so much.
Coming back. Would you like to come back?
We invite you.
You want to bring the rocking chair up?
Do you want a motion to come back?
Yeah, sure. You want me to motion to come back?
Make a motion that Brad rejoins us for the following of the rest, the remainder of the meeting.
I second it.
All those in favor?
Chris Goodwin, aye.
DJ McNulty, aye.
Patrick Molina, aye.
Aye, 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 aye.
Wally, aye.
Thank you. Thanks, Wally. All right. Next up, town planner update.
So we just have two items. One is that the MBTA 3A communities application has been submitted to EO H L C. So hopefully we will get their approval and we will be officially in compliance. We are still waiting to hear back from the Attorney General on all other zoning and general bylaw changes that were approved at the annual town meeting. And then the second update is just to let you know that the select board last evening appointed a town planner slash conservation agent. His name is Jonathan Sullivan. He is expected to start on July 21st, so we're very excited. Once he starts, we will obviously, that first initial meeting, either Annie or I will attend the meeting with him, just to make sure that we can make the proper introductions to you all. We will send out an email and whatnot in advance, but it's his day, first day will literally be the day before your meeting. So we'll just help smooth over the transition. Annie will serve as the administrator for the economic development planning department. So if the town planner and conservation agent ended out in the field and there's still people who stop in, Annie will still help field those calls. But main point of contact will be the town planner slash conservation agent. So again, we're super excited and we're very hopeful that everything will go smoothly. There's a lot of information to share, so there will be some bumps along the way. But just rest assured that you will have the support that you need in order to move forward with your business.
Congratulations, Mr. Sullivan.
So he has, I can share his resume with the board as well. He has substantial education. He has three master's degrees ranging from regional planning to more centralized focus. He is currently working with a private engineering firm, consulting firm. So he does a lot of consulting work. So he sees it from the other side. And then he has worked for a community up, I believe in Portland, Maine. So he has some zoning enforcement and some building administration type of work that he's dealt with. So he has more of the educational background, but he has touched upon it in an experienced standpoint. So we're looking forward to bringing him on board. And again, we think with just a little bit of training, he'll be able to hit the ground running.
Show him the ropes?
Yes.
I just have a quick question back on the MBTA. Have there been additional communities that are now going back and filing suit against the state? Have you heard anything like that? Is it?
I haven't heard anything, but I haven't really necessarily, yeah. I mean, usually something of that nature would trigger a lot of information being shared through listservs, et cetera. And I haven't heard of anything of that nature. I do know that I did hear just yesterday that Boxford had submitted a zoning district for the MBTA 3A and EO H L C denied it due to the location that was selected. So I think more of the news that I'm hearing is on that front, not necessarily from the legal pursuit. But again, like I said, I haven't been looking for it. But if it was major, I think it would have kind of like, something that would.
I thought I heard something recently that there was, there was a ruling against like seven communities or something like that.
Yeah, it was nine communities that filed and they dismissed it, didn't hear it, said that there's no basis for it.
Oh, really?
And that was because of the, but that was the, because of the auditor's opinion about it being an unfounded mandate. That was, I would say, that was a while ago.
Gotcha.
Yeah. And there hasn't been, there hasn't been anything else in the news since.
Yeah.
Okay, cool. Thank you. Anything else from the town planner?
No other updates for me.
All right. Other items not easily anticipated at the time of the posting.
We have two A and Rs coming?
Yes.
Yes.
Sweet.
So that is.
Look forward to that.
We will be meeting on the 22nd to make sure that we have enough time to hear those.
And meet the regs?
Also, now that we have, Mr. Sullivan will be joining us, we can put him on our, put him to work and figure out some definitions between minor and major modifications.
I was saying, I already knew his first project.
He can hear it here first. He already has a task to break down what we, what we see in the, out there. So, Wally, I think you heard that, two A and, two A and Rs are coming in for 179 Main Street and 7 Marjory Street for the next meeting on July 22nd.
I did, yeah. And congrats, Mr. Sullivan.
Yes. Awesome. Next meeting is July 22nd. It's seven o'clock here.
I have another item, not recently.
Oh, you do? Okay, sorry.
So last time we were here, we had people from Homestead Land come up and talk about dying and dead trees. I did have an opportunity to go up to the site and meet with both the proponent and his butter, who just happened to be out there as well. I met with them for about an hour and talked to them about what was going on. I also put eyes on the scene in a couple of things, a couple of observations. There was, so, I mean, when you get there, there's a big canopy. So, I mean, there is a large, if we're talking about a buffer zone, there's a big canopy there, like that goes, you know, tens of feet into the sky, right?
Yep.
And in the middle, there are some areas that have been cleared. And you could see some new growth coming in of like maple saplings and things. So it didn't necessarily show, at least to me, on the pictures that were there last, last, last time we met. But when I was out there in the ground, I could see that some, like to Brad's point, some of the nature was doing what, you know, it was supposed to do and seems to be regenerating the places, and particularly in the places that were cleared. So, you know, it stands to reason that clearing the dead stuff will help breed, you know, new, new growing. So I think, I think it was a productive meeting. And, and it, we did, we did have some commonality between the butter and the homeowner about, hey, this stuff should go and, you know. So it was, it was fairly productive.
Awesome. Thank you.
Of course.
Jen, on that same note, I spoke to the arborist and his schedule was unable to meet me within a, within a few days. However, just a note for the record, he said that they did do the estimate, but it was over a year and a half ago and they hadn't been to the site or seen since. But he's still willing to meet out there and give us the arborist side of things, which I think would be helpful.
True. Okay. Yeah, I mean, like again, I think that, that property there, dead trees can go, right? I think that, I think that was kind of the understanding. I think the, the other major issue is that it's the water runoff, right? Which is a separate issue from dead trees falling, the water runoff issue. And cutting down live trees is not going to help that, right? But dead trees should go before they become unsafe and that kind of stuff. So thanks, Wally. Appreciate the follow up there.
Glad you did that.
All right. Next meeting July 22nd. And we're also, I think we're probably going to have to just, we'll just talk about it now. August 5th is probably going to be, is the next one up. So we can just have that ready to go as well.
Just FYI, I'm going to be out for that. That's my daughter's birthday.
Okay.
We were alone. That's not the kind of present she would.
Are, is anyone else, I know it's about a month away. You're good, the 5th? Brad?
Yes. I don't know mine either. Yeah.
As of now? Okay. So 22nd and the 5th. Awesome. Thank you. That is all. Entertained the motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion adjourned.
8:24. All those in favor?
Aye.
Welcome.
Aye.
Chris Goodwin, aye.
DJ McNulty, aye.
Patrick Molina, aye.
Wally, starting today.
Get a full board again.
All right. Meeting closed, 8:24. Thank you, Town of Groveland. Appreciate you. Have a good day.
Thanks, everyone. Bye. You bet. Right.